Call to all the Hammond City Council agenda for January the 9th, 2018. We have no public hearing, so we're gonna go right into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Yeah.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Paul West, I get you to come up leaders in prayer, please.
Let us pray. God have a lasting Father. It's in the name of Jesus that we come.
Oh, yeah.
Not for form of fashion or for an outside show to an unfamiliar world, but in the most meek and humble manner we know how. We say thank you for life being as well as it is. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you, dear God, for our mayor. We thank you for our council. We thank you for their service. We thank you for these constituents that are present tonight. We pray that all things are done decent and in order. Give us a servant heart. Give us a listening ear. Empower us with godly wisdom to make the godly choices and decisions as it relates to all things being graceful. Fathers, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Jason, do our prayers.
In the name of the United States of America, and to the people of which we stand, one nation, one God, the innocent, who live to be justified.
God bless.
Yes, I have a council report. I have Mr. Brett Starwood, who had property over on the corner of Natchez and Mississippi Street, and he was denied the placement of a mobile home there. And at a later date, a mobile home was placed a little further down the street on Mississippi Street. He is extremely angry about that and how much money it cost him to do what he had to do to put homes there. First of all, there were homes that were there. Nobody helped him out with location of the sewer or water lines, and he's very upset about the fact that he was denied placement of a mobile home on his property when someone else at a later date was given permission to place one in the same location, in the same area, on the same street. And Mr. Starwood is here, and he wanted to talk about the fact of the, he claims unfair practices, that if it's zoned for mobile home, why is one person allowed to place one on another when it's not?
Can you talk to him about that, Mayor?
I actually called him after we heard the complaint and looked into it. The planning and zoning committee went ahead and approved, and then the council approved the mobile home there with a, was it something based on the fact that when the individual who was very old that lived at that piece of property that wanted to go back there, when they got the bid passed, the mobile home can't stay there? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is. That is correct.
So that's why apparently it was passed by the council into the planning and zoning. Also, he mentioned about the water meters, and at that point in time, I called Guy Palermo. Do you want to come up?
I'm here, Mr.
Did he give you a call back?
He said he's giving me a bid. I don't want a bid. I don't want to spend a dollar.
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna give you water meters.
I understand you're not gonna give me the water meters, but what I just asked you, I'm not here to...
One minute. Give your name and address.
My name is Brett Starwood. My address is 216 Choctaw Road, Lafayette, Louisiana. But I'm from Hammond, Louisiana. I have property in Hammond. My complaint wasn't, I'm not here to sue you or anything, act anything crazy. I just asked a question. You got, after $150,000 of my hard-earned money, you allow someone else to put a mobile home 300 feet from where I asked to put one, on the exact same street? And I don't think it's fair, you know, even though I understand whatever business you guys have, but even on the property that I asked about putting a mobile home on, when I purchased the property, it had a mobile home on it. There's like 87 mobile homes in that area. But when I came here three times, I was denied, and you guys act like it was like asking for an Antichrist to come, just to put a mobile home, where there's 87. Now that I've put almost $150,000 on that corner, you allow a mobile home to come in, and now I'm a registered appraisal. Now if I ever wanted to sell that property, I have to use that as a comparison to sell the house that you made me build. And so now I have the area developed, but the water lines that were there, the city doesn't have record, I guess, of where they are, so I'm asking you just to put the water lines down so that I can play a plumber to, a tap into them. That's, I mean, after $150,000 of my hard-earned money, I don't think that's too much to ask for. I mean, I know you guys livelihood is, you make money on taxes and water meters and all that. I'm in the military. I don't make a lot of money at all, but the few dollars I do make, I spent wisely, and I spent unjustly because of decisions that you guys gave me.
Apparently, this decision was based on an 88-year-old individual who wanted to move back to that property.
I hope to be 88.
As far as you're concerned with your, with your construction, me being a state licensed contractor, I'm sure Mr. Wells knows as well, because he builds a lot around here, that when you build a structure, you need to run your water to the main.
Yeah, I expect...
It shouldn't be right in front of that property, and that's why Guy Palermo...
Well, we've dug around. We can't find it.
Well, Guy Palermo was supposed to give you a call back and meet you out there. That never happened?
No, I spoke to one of his workers, and his workers only talked about me paying or him giving me an appraisal. I don't need an appraisal. I need water.
Well, you need to run the line to the meter, and you need to pay for the meter. And that's standard practice.
Mr. President, the person that put that mobile home 300 yards, feet, whatever, from where you had proposed to put one, is not 88 years old.
How old is he? You're the one who passed this. This is your district, correct?
Yes, it is my district, and I voted also for him to put one there, since at the time, it was one on three, it was a corner lot, and there was one on each corner, and I never did understand why he was denied when you had one on three corners, and you said you want to preserve that corner, and I was trying to figure out, preserve it for what? But Johnny Jackson, that moved that mobile home on Mississippi Street, is not 88 years old, nor close to being 88 years old.
Who said they wanted to preserve that lot?
I'm sorry?
You said someone said they didn't want it.
That's what the council said, that they didn't want any more mobile homes in there.
I have the newspaper right there where you quote word for word what you said, but I mean, I don't want to go through all that. I just basically just trying to get water and sewer.
You wanted to put more than one mobile home, right?
I only put, I only requested one.
I thought it was three.
No. It, I have three lots, but I didn't ask to put three mobile homes. You may have assumed that I wanted to put a mobile home park, last thing on my mind. I was actually just trying to provide a home for one of my cousins. That's neither here nor there. Problem now is that I'm, you know, I spent all of my retirement to try to make your, make, live up to your standards, and your standards are seen to be adjustable. You don't have to give me this. You guys could talk about it. You have my number. Just give me a call. But the bottom line is, I mean, I've done my portion, and it seems like my portion, like it was, the rules aren't for everyone. So the rules, whatever rule that apply to me, you guys help me out.
Well, the rules apply to you the same as they apply for anyone else who's building construction, and that is, you're gonna have to run a line from your structure to where the water is, and you're gonna have to place a meter on the property.
Right. Well, I mean, but I don't have a water coming from the city part. The city part is where I need it.
The water in the city is...
And so instead of me paying, I don't even know how much it costs. It could be 50 bucks. It's 50 bucks that I don't want to spend, because I spent 150 already thousand playing games with you guys on a $10,000 mobile home. It just don't seem fair. And then this guy comes right past me, parades past me while I'm working, and put a mobile home 300 yards down the road from me. You know, he's not 88 because I actually know him. He's actually a city worker, and he works, you know, somewhere close around you guys. But that doesn't mean, I don't even want him to move it. It has nothing to do with him. This all happened right here in this room. This all happened right here. And all I'm asking you for, I mean, the least you could do is spend half, not even a quarter of what I've spent to help, finish helping me develop land that you guys kind of forced me into where I am.
Well, I can promise you down the road, that piece of property that you just built on, with the structure that's on concrete that you built, is well worth more than I thought it was gonna be.
It probably is. It probably is.
If you're an appraiser.
Yes, sir.
Then you know that as well.
Yeah, but I know that. But I also know that I have kids at home that I'm trying to provide for, and I kind of took away from college fund to make this little thing, because I was halfway in the air when I went and started, and then you guys give me this information. And so I had to change plans. I'm not worried about yesterday. I'm worried about today. Today is it tomorrow you worry about yesterday?
Understood.
Thank you, Pam.
Need a new council report? Now, Mayor?
I went to a regional planning commission meeting with the parish president, as we do every second Tuesday of the month, and once again emphasized the fact that we will be having to put in more money, matching funds whenever we want to do something with federal government, state for roads and what have you. So just something to keep in mind for down the road, that we're gonna have to have funds placed aside to be able to match their funds, which is usually 80, 20% to us, or 90, 10, if we're fortunate. Also, we had Holy Ghost eighth graders come in, enjoyed the time with them touring the city, and then they went to the jail, and they also went to the airport, I believe, today, and enjoyed the time out there before they go into their next phase of education, which is high school. We collected 92% of their property taxes. Total collected today is 4.2 million. And that's my report. Thank you.
Are there any new businesses up in the audience like to be recognized? Now we go to resolution.
For minutes. For approval minutes. Please. You need approval minutes.
Minutes of approval, please. Make that motion, please. Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Resolutions, number one. A resolution to authorize Vanguard Race LLC to sell and serve alcohol at North Cypress Fitness Center at 1606 South Magnolia Street, Hammond, Louisiana, and the surrounding race area on Saturday, February 17th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Mr. David Palado.
Hello. Thank you for having me here. My name's David. I put on sporting events. I have for 18 years. I'm from South Louisiana, and I have an event that I'm working with North Cypress Fitness on that's an obstacle course race. They go through about a three-mile course. Part of that is, the bulk of the property we're using, Dr. Anton, is generously allowing us to use. So it's right behind North Cypress Fitness. It's a one-day event, and it's something that, they happen all over the country, and I'm just happy to be here where I can do it first. So I've been doing them in Mandeville, in Baton Rouge, in New Orleans, and this will be the first time to do one in Hammond. And when these participants cross the finish line in a lot of these events, especially being from South Louisiana, they enjoy being able to have a beer, share some of their stories of what they saw on the course, and so I'm here to see about the possibility of being able to have that for the festival at the end of our event, which is in the parking lot at North Cypress Fitness.
Mr. David, I'm a little concerned with the surrounding race area. That leaves it kind of vague, and we, if you're gonna sell it in the parking lot at North Cypress...
It's the only place it will be.
I would like to propose we change that wording to...
Of course.
Parking lot of North Cypress.
Yes, that's the only place it...
We do something similar for Harley-Davidson and other surrounding areas is a little concerning.
Yeah, we're within, you know, the parking lots, it's about a 50 by 200-foot, you know, festival area, and so it stays within that area.
Will you have someone checking IDs?
Multiple.
Making sure.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve with the stipulation that it is confined to the North Cypress Fitness Center parking lot? Or property, I should say? Maybe North Cypress Fitness Park property?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number two, a resolution to authorize Vanguard Race LLC to obtain a waiver of the open container law at North Cypress Fitness Center at 1606 South Magnolia Street, Hammond, Louisiana, and the surrounding race area on Saturday, February 17th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And the correction would be in the North Cypress Park, um, North Cypress parking lot.
Motion approved. With the change. Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, a resolution to transfer $8,173 from the available surplus funds from the closeout of FY 2017, street improvements, 42011713, to miscellaneous sidewalk improvements, project number 42011805. Lacey Landrill.
This is for, the transfer is for the purpose of the Morris Cypress Sidewalk Project that we had on the agenda for last time and asked to table it so that the DDD Design Committee would have a chance to look at that. Their board will also be considering this project tomorrow night at their meeting. What we are proposing is a three-way split of this project. The contract total that has come in for the construction is $76,000. The architectural fees are $8,518, which brings a total of the project to $84,518. So the three-way split between each of us, between the city, the DDD, and Andre Terrio, who owns the buildings at that location, is $28,173. We had a significant amount of money left over from the street improvements. We have already completed all the street improvements and completed all that, so the surplus that was left over, we're just asking for $8,173 to be transferred from that project into miscellaneous sidewalk improvements, which you already had budgeted $20,000 there. So that would make the total come to $28,173, which would be the total city's contribution for the project. The project does include, and the project architect is here to explain, Jeffrey Smith, it does include tree grates, other beautification efforts along that corridor, and it will match the brick pattern that is demonstrated throughout the downtown.
So you saying that the city's portion is $28,000, or that $8,000 that we trying to transfer?
$28,173 is the total of the city's portion. What we're doing is we're taking some remaining money from the street improvements project and transferring that over, because we're finished with that, and we know we won't need it for the construction to finish out what was there, and we're asking to transfer that over into miscellaneous sidewalks that you already had appropriated for sidewalk work.
What was, Mr. President, what was the total amount of money we had remaining in the street?
I was afraid you were gonna ask me that. Webb, do you have any idea?
I know Seda told me it was, that we had plenty of money left over and put that surplus there.
Can we get a specific number of what we have left over? Is that, is that something that we would, we would want to know before we vote on what that is? Or should we just vote on plenty of money?
I know, I, I...
I don't want to vote on something.
I mean, I asked Seda specifically, and she said that we had at least $8,173 remaining in the fund. I don't know how much we have. That's what I'm telling you.
That's, that's important information to come to the council, and we want to ask for allocations. Mr. President, I think we just want to know...
We would be reserving the rest of it left there. We're just asking to transfer $8,173 over.
So what, what street projects were we, do we not, do we not budget enough projects? Or did we come in that far under budget on the projects? And which projects were they?
I think we had very good bids, which is why, didn't we roll 2018 into 2017 numbers and extend that out?
We even added some.
Yeah, we even added more...
So what is the total overage? Do we look at additional projects that we might want to do in the city, or are we just arbitrarily saying that? I guess I would like to know what is left, because what other projects would we be willing to take, take a look at as well?
You moved some money to get some other things done, didn't you?
They just added some other work into the contract to get it done. Yeah.
The agenda isn't supposed to close it out, though.
That's what, well, already...
That must be all...
Yeah, y'all already applied for the final change order, and we've already done the clear lien on it.
$3,000, whatever. I'm not sure.
This sidewalk project, had it been budgeted for?
This sidewalk project had not been specifically budgeted for. What is budgeted for is 20,000 of miscellaneous sidewalks, in addition to what is already in the street department budget for sidewalk repairs and other enhancements that may be done.
So some of the streets that we've put in, in action for sidewalks and drainage, this gonna take precedence over those?
No, those projects have already been done, so the projects...
No. I got three streets, I mean, I'm sorry, I got four streets that I asked to be done, and they haven't even been started, not only done, so I'm asking how did this jump ahead of something that had been placed?
You talking about things that were placed to be done this year?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Or in the future, outlay projects?
Those, those streets that I gave you, I sent to you, Webb, how long ago that's been?
They're concrete streets, or they're asphalt streets?
Asphalt streets.
Okay. I don't, I don't know.
One is a concrete street, Mary's Alley.
I think the parish is coming to do that one.
Generally, if it's asphalt streets, the parish comes to do those, and I know they did several in District 3 this year, but I don't know which ones...
I mean, you saying, but you, we talking about sidewalks or paint?
Generally speaking, the concrete streets is the, is the concrete that we use. So we use, usually sidewalks and concrete streets come together in projects that we bid out, because it's all concrete. It's all the same.
Asphalt line item wells in that district usually, each councilman for the parish picks roads and can get with you as well to see what roads you want, and they'll put that in their budget, and then sometime during the year, usually toward the end of the year, even though it's 2018, is when they get to the majority of their road projects overlaying asphalt.
But I thought we were talking sidewalks. How we keep switching from sidewalk to asphalt?
Because Mary's Alley is, is asphalt or is concrete?
No, that's, that one is concrete. But what I'm talking about is, I'm talking about Mississippi Street, I'm talking about Natchez Street, and I'm talking about Palmetto. I'm talking about drainage and sidewalks. I can't understand why we keep coming back to asphalt.
Well, if you don't have the $20,000 to move to something, and let's say Palmetto and Mississippi Street, that project could cost an excess of $150,000 or $80,000. That's why when you have excess on some of these projects, you take that money and you try to fit, piece together smaller projects and get them out behind you. This particular project that I think Jeff is handling over here, DDD is partnering with, what's the, three-way split? How much is it?
The three-way split is each entity is contributing $28,173.
So not all projects when complete have an abundance of money left over?
Two-thirds of the project are coming from other funds. They're not coming from the city. So I, it was a, it was a request that was made. It was also a request that was supported by the district that the project is in, so it's to the council, to the side.
And get things done with other people contributing. It's always wise to jump in and knock it out.
Mr. President, I think, you know, if you look at the budget for 2017, 2018, which goes through June of 2018, right? There's $20,000 of total miscellaneous sidewalk dollars budgeted for the entire city, basically for the entire city. So what the administration's proposing is that we take the entire budget that we've allocated for one project. So if it's under miscellaneous, I'm assuming that that's primarily for repairs and different things that happen through, can I finish?
Sure.
That happen through the course of the year. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to the project, I'm just wondering if we take the entire sidewalk miscellaneous budget for the entire year for the entire city and give that to one project, does that, does that really make sense for us? Now, once we do that, then there's $0 left in the entire budget for the rest of the year for any miscellaneous sidewalk repairs that come up that have to be done. Or they should move money from some other bucket to put over there. So what I'm hearing you asking us to do, you're asking the council to approve to take the entire 100% of the miscellaneous budget for whatever, for the next, I guess, for the next six months, and move all that into one project. Is that pretty, is that accurate?
Not exactly. There's $40,000 in the street department that goes to the repair of sidewalks throughout the year.
Through the capital project?
No, not in the capital projects, and that's why I was trying to clear...
So you're in the sidewalk improvements, miscellaneous sidewalks, $20,000 is what you're looking at?
That's why I was prefacing this comments with, the capital outlay is for our new sidewalk projects. There is also sidewalk repair money that is slated in the street department budget under the carpenter area, that I believe is $40,000 for the entire year. You'll need to look at the carpenter. There's the street department budget, and then the carpenter budget is probably directly
I don't necessarily see it, but you know, I'm trying to find it on the, on the spot. I don't, I don't necessarily see it. I see, I see main sidewalks are here for $40,000.
That's the line item that I'm describing. And we've only used about half of that for the year thus far.
So, I mean, I just think if we have the money in there, we allocate it for sidewalk repairs, there's, I mean, I think there's lots of sidewalks that could be repaired in the city of Hammond. There are lots of needs for sidewalks in our community, so...
I agree with you. That's why we budgeted the 40 there in the, in that other area, to handle those.
So where's the rest of the funds that were, so is that used for repairs? Is that used for, because the difference is, this budget is for repairs.
Primarily, yes.
The other budget is for capital, for capital projects.
Yes, sir.
Things we want to do.
Yes, sir.
So why wouldn't we just take the money out of the repair budget and leave it in the capital project budget? If it's the same thing, if you're assuming you got the money, why wouldn't we just take the $20,000 out of this account, which is your, which is line item 530129, and take, there's $25,000 left in there right now, why not just take that?
Well, it's a choice we made, and you have Robert Morgan's team, who actually fixes sidewalks if you go two blocks over. They did a full block down the street.
But this is your repair budget right here. This isn't the...
That's a miscellaneous amount for sidewalks. The repair budget is $40,000. This is a brand-new complex with someone that's spending how much on that building? $2 million on the building, and they're willing to share in a partnership to repair and change out sidewalks. Sounds like a pretty good deal to me. DDD's spending $20,000 plus, Andre Terrio's spending $20,000 plus, and we're spending the last third of it. It's a great deal in the city's favor, I believe, and that $20,000 fits the bill.
Answers my questions. They go to council. Motion approved. Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Number four, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Roofing Solutions for $43,680 to remove and replace existing PVR panel for roof system for hangar number 15. Janet Thurman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Um, we put RFP eighteen oh nine out asking for pricing for two different options for their hanger fifteen roof. Uh, the first option was a retrofit, um, which came to our attention after the bid closed. That is not compatible with the system that is there now. So our only other option was to remove and replace the existing roof, which was in the budget this year for forty thousand. Um, the street department is going to come up with the additional three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars out of their sales tax account. So we're just asking for permission to enter into contract with Roofing Solutions.
Question from the counsel. Motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Old business none?
We have one old business.
One.
Number one, a resolution to award contract to Ronald Morris Construction, Inc. for seventy-six thousand dollars for the Morris and Cypress Sidewalk Improvement Project. Jeffrey Smith.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I think you know what I'm here to talk about, Lacey went through it. Uh, just to give you a little background, Andre Terrio, you've seen the building, two-story building, he's got eleven apartments. Half of them are already rented. He's moving his Wells Fargo Financial Services business into the building. He'll have a two thousand square feet of rental space. So this is a great inventory added to our community, which will certainly help the tax coffers. So, um, uh, because I was working on the design of the building, I ended up designing the sidewalks that go with it, and they match the, the downtown development district standard with brick pavers, tree grates, and et cetera. So it's, it's gonna be a, a great new addition to our downtown, extending the historic district. So we took, we got three proposals. Uh, Striker Construction, the gentleman who built the building, is a hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred. DNA's Construction gave us a, a proposal for eighty-seven thousand six hundred. And the low proposal was, uh, from Ronald Morris Construction, Inc. for seventy-six thousand. So recommending awarding to the low proposal.
The counsel? Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank y'all.
Final thousand, all is none. Introduction of orders set for public hearing.
Number one, introduction of an order to transfer twenty-six thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cents from the general fund balance, Fund One Hundred, for Microsoft Software Renewals, Marcus McMillan.
Good evening. I'm coming for permission to transfer twenty-six thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cents from general fund balance for Microsoft Renewals. These renewals weren't budgeted for. These are actually renewals for, uh, what we call a true-up. The true-up is paid at the end of every year for additional machines that we add throughout the city throughout the year. And we're at the end of the three-year contract, and we have to pay the true-up cost, which is going to be that total.
Question, Mr. President. Just, I know we're gonna talk about it, but is that gonna impact the ending fund balance for the, for that, uh, for that, um, line, another twenty? So what is that gonna, just so we can, between now and then, what does that now make the ending fund balance? I mean, that's probably a question for the administration, not, not for you.
We can ask Sada for an update. She just finished the audit, and she usually does, um, a new end fund balance based off of the final audit numbers, and usually brings a, uh, an amendment of the budget in, uh, January, February time to, to have that number.
When you do that, Lacey, can you guys also give us an update on how many times we've had to adjust the, uh, ending fund balance for this year?
Sure.
Um, and how much money we've, we've added to the budget after the budget's been approved?
Sure.
So we can kind of just get an idea of that. I would like to know if that's, I don't know if the other council members would like to know, but it would be an information to have.
No problem.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.